... meeting of the St. Joseph County Council, August ninth, two thousand twenty-two, is now called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation which will be given by Councilman Randy Fig.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's have a moment of silence for our Congresswoman and the three others that were killed in a horrible accident last Wednesday. Let's pray. Our Heavenly Father, we ask your blessings upon the meeting here tonight. We ask that you give us wisdom in the job that we have to do tonight. We do want to pray for the families of Congresswoman Jackie and the other three that were in an automobile accident. I pray for them now at this time. And we thank you once again for your love and your goodness. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Thank you, Councilman Fig. Next, we have petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters. Mr. Cantor Ricky?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. I'd like to move to reappoint Andy La-Dig, Rod Schroeder, and Sheila Saradowski to the Agricultural Advisory Board, C A F O, and Bonnie Richardson to the St. Joseph County Animal Control Commission. I'd like to nominate Terry Bush to the St. Joseph County Economic Development Commission.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations at this time? Hearing none, nominations are now closed. Do I hear a motion? Roll call? Okay. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded by Councilwoman Hess and Councilwoman Nolan. Please take the roll.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright is absent?
He's on.
Oh, Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
And Mr. Root?
Yes.
And Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Pass is nine zero.
Let the record show that Andy La-Dig, Rod Schroeder, Sheila Saradowski are reappointed to the Agricultural Advisory Board, and Bonnie Richardson is reappointed to the St. Joe County Animal Control Board, and Terry Bush is nominated to the St. Joseph County Economic Development Commission. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the July twelfth public hearing?
So much.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass the minutes from July twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, the public hearing. It's made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Cantor Ricky. Will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
President Morton?
Yes.
And Ms. Bobby. Bobby, Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Sorry, Bobby. Nine, passes nine zero.
Let the record show that the approval of the minutes from the July twelfth, two thousand twenty-two meeting passed by a vote of nine to zero. Report from the county auditor?
No report, you're right.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Report from county commissioners? No report. Report from any council special committee? Hearing none. Next on the agenda, first reading. Clerk, will you please read Bill number one twelve twenty-two?
Bill number one twelve twenty-two, a resolution determining that the qualifications for an economic revitalization area have been met and confirming resolution number of the St. Joseph County Council declaring an area of that county to be an economic revitalization area, confirming resolution. Petitioner, Max Plastics, Inc.
Bill number one twelve twenty-two is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. Clerk, will you please read the next bill?
Bill number one thirteen dash twenty-two, ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council authorizing the issuance of the county's taxable economic development tax increment revenue bonds in one or more series, the provisions of the proceeds thereof to Honeysuckle Solar LLC or an affiliate thereof, and authorizing and approving other actions in respect thereto. Petitioner, Phil Fasenda.
Bill number one thirteen dash twenty-two is assigned to the Budget and Administration Committee. Please read the next bill.
Bill number one fifteen twenty-two, a resolution of the St. Joseph County Council declaring a portion of St. Joseph County an economic revitalization area pursuant to Indiana Code six dash one point one dash twelve point one dash one. That's sequence, declaratory resolution. Petitioner, I E C Site Number One Project Site.
Bill number one fifteen twenty-two is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. That concludes first readings for this evening. Next on the agenda are resolutions. Clerk, will you please read Bill number one fourteen twenty-two?
Bill number one fourteen twenty-two, a resolution of the St. Joseph County Council approving the disposal of property. Petitioner, St. Joseph County Redevelopment Commission.
Petitioner?
Good evening. Bill Shalio, Economic Development Director, St. Joseph County, with Department of Infrastructure, Planning, and Growth, with offices on the with offices on the seventh and the eleventh floor. Before you tonight is Bill number one fourteen dash twenty-two, which seeks county council approval to dispose a county-owned property to further an economic development project. Based on state law, the county council is required by state law to approve the disposition of property over fifty thousand dollars. The subject property for the disposition activity are two properties generally located at five, six, two, seven, five, Snowberry Road. These properties are presently used for agricultural purposes. To prepare these properties for disposition, staff has received two independent appraisals to determine the value of the land, and the average appraised value is a hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred dollars. If the council approves disposition of these two properties, they will be integrated into a purchase agreement which the Redevelopment Commission would be seeking to buy a seventy-acre parcel of land located at the northwest corner of Walnut and Early Roads in the Indiana Enterprise Center area that will be adjacent to I E C Site One and also adjacent to Redevelopment Commission-owned land. This land would be used as part of a rail corridor to provide rail service into the core development area. Staff humbly request council approval of Bill number one fourteen dash twenty-two.
Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none. We will open the public hearing on Bill number one fourteen twenty-two. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on Bill one fourteen twenty-two. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number one fourteen twenty-two. It's made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Cantor Ricky. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
President Morton?
Yes.
Resolution passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number one fourteen twenty-two was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill under salary amendments? Bill number one oh five twenty-two?
Bill number one oh five dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending ordinance ninety-five dash twenty-one, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year two thousand twenty-two. Petitioner, Dukem Center.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton just comes with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Good evening. Randy Squadrone, Financial Coordinator, Dukem Center.
Could you speak into the mic, sir?
I was trying not to keep it from ringing, so. Randy Squadrone, Financial Coordinator, Dukem Center, forty-one sixty-one Lathrop, South Bend. We are requesting an inline transfer in our project income fund of twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The request for the transfer is due to the director being on FMLA for twelve weeks. It is recommended that Mr. Thompson be the interim director during this time period, as well as the interim director be paid at the director's base rate during this time. The, we are also recommending that this will be retroactive from June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, and the impact is revenue neutral in the project income fund.
Thank you. Any questions from council for Mr. Squadrone? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing on Bill number one oh five twenty-two. Does anyone, anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on Bill one oh five twenty-two. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number one oh five twenty-two is made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Cantor Ricky. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
President Morton?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number one oh five twenty-two is passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill on the agenda? Bill number one oh nine twenty-two?
Bill number one oh nine dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending ordinance ninety-five dash twenty-one, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year two thousand twenty-two. Petitioner, Health Department.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton just comes with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Hi, yes, this is Amy Rupe, Administrator with the Department of Health, offices on the eighth and ninth floor of the County City Building. And we are starting year two of our three-year grant cycle with the CDC. We are needing to establish a salary ordinance for our community health workers, as well as some salary recovery for some of our current Department of Health staff.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none. I'll open the public hearing on Bill number one oh nine twenty-two. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed on Bill one oh nine twenty-two. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second? Motion to pass Bill number one oh nine twenty-two is made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Cantor Ricky, and a third was made by Councilman Nolan. Any further comments from any council member in regards to Bill one oh nine twenty-two? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright? Mr. Katanz-
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
No.
No, okay.
No.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
President Morton?
Yes.
The bill passes eight zero, eight one.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number one oh nine dash twenty-two was passed by a vote of eight to one. Next on the agenda, we have a public hearing and public comment on fiscal matters. All financial issues were heard and discussed at our July twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two committee meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Hearing none. Public comment is now closed. Clerk, will you please read Bill number one oh seven twenty-two?
Bill number one oh seven dash twenty-two, an ordinance appropriating and transferring monies for the purpose herein specified for the several departments herein listed of St. Joseph County Government.
May I have a motion on Bill number one oh seven twenty-two?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number one oh seven twenty-two was made by Councilman Cantor Ricky. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes, but no on B, F, and J.
No on B, F, and J. Okay, thank you. Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
And President Morton?
Yes.
Passes nine zero, but a no on B, F, and J.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number one oh seven twenty-two is passed by a vote of nine to zero, except on item B, item F, and item J. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number one oh two dash twenty-two?
A second. I have the next one, one ten twenty-two. Am I missing?
Yeah, one ten.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sorry. I'm sorry, under American Rescue Plan Fund. Will you please read Bill number one ten twenty-two?
Sure. Bill number one ten dash twenty-two, an ordinance appropriating and/or transferring monies for the purposes herein specified for the departments herein listed of St. Joseph County Government.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill number one ten twenty-two comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Hi, yes, Amy Rupe, Department of Health, with offices on the eighth and ninth floor of the County City Building. And we are requesting a transfer of funds from employee to contractual for the behavioral scientist that we would like to employ.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the petitioner?
What is the pay of this scientist? Is that here in this information?
Amy, do you have that?
Uh, Bob is there? I don't, we don't have a salary since it's going to be contractual with Notre Dame.
Oh, okay.
So there's not a salary for a person we're going to enter into a contract.
It's more than one person. It's for a whole different bunch of things, right?
That is correct. We, we decided that going with a county employee wasn't going to work. We would rather do a contractual agreement with the University of Notre Dame.
Yeah, well, I just want to make it clear because it says behavioral scientist, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So.
Right, that's where we're moving it from.
Yeah, okay.
To contractual services, correct?
Thank you.
Correct.
Any other questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none. I'll open the public hearing on Bill number one ten twenty-two. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on Bill one ten twenty-two. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill one ten dash twenty-two is made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Cantor Ricky. Any further council discussion on one ten twenty-two? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
No.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
And President Morton?
Yes.
Bill passes eight to one.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number one ten dash twenty-two was passed by a vote of eight to one. Clerk, will you please read the next bill on the agenda? Bill number one oh two twenty-two?
My, my next is Bill-
Wait a minute.
One eleven dash twenty-two.
I must be fine tonight.
Trying to trip me up there.
I just thought you were.
Just ask him which one he wants to read next.
Yeah, there you go.
Bill number one eleven dash twenty-two, an ordinance appropriating and/or transferring monies for the purpose herein specified for the department herein listed of St. Joseph County Government.
Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill number one eleven twenty-two comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Hello, this is Courtney from Portage Banner. I'm a little bit under the weather, so I'm sorry for that not being there. But we are requesting this money to upgrade our IT systems at Portage Banner. We are using computers from two thousand nine. And we are also requesting for a machine to do all of our temperature screening that is required by the state in this bill as well, and it will actually save money for the American Rescue Fund. It will put back roughly nine to ten thousand dollars a month back into the American Rescue Fund that can be used elsewhere.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none. I'll open the public hearing on Bill number one eleven twenty-two. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on Bill number one eleven twenty-two. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number one eleven twenty-two was made by Councilman Cantor Ricky. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on one eleven twenty-two? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Did I miss Randy Fig?
Yes.
Randy, Randy, Mr. Fig, Mr. Fig?
Yes.
President Morton?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number one eleven dash twenty-two is passed by a vote of nine to zero. Now, now we can do one oh two twenty-two. Clerk, will you please read the Bill number, Bill number one oh two twenty-two?
Bill number one oh two dash twenty-two, an ordinance amending and supplementing an appendix schedule of fines and fees for the St. Joseph County Department of Health. Petitioner, St. Joseph County Department of Health.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton just comes with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Yes, Amy Rupe with the Department of Health. And we would like to offer three new vaccines in our clinic, as well as adjust the price on one vaccine that we currently do offer.
Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none. I'll open the public hearing on Bill one oh two twenty-two. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed on one oh two twenty-two. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for passage.
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number one oh two twenty-two is made by Councilman Katanzright, seconded by Councilwoman Hess.
No, not.
Councilman Nolan. Any further comments from any council member on one oh two twenty-two? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
And Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
President Morton?
Yes.
Bill passes nine zero.
Let the record show that Bill number one oh two twenty-two was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next under Land Use Planning. Clerk, will you please read Bill number ninety twenty-two?
Bill number ninety dash twenty-two, an ordinance to vacate a public way or public place located wholly within the unincorporated portion of St. Joseph County Public Way or Public Place. Petitioner, Fur Road Holdings LLC, located at five, one, oh, one, three, Gumwood Road, Granger, Indiana, four, six, five, three, zero, USA.
Good evening.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill number ninety dash twenty-two comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Good evening. Abby Wiles, APC Director. This is a vacation that was on the agenda last month and was tabled. It is a vacation to, or a request to vacate the bump out shown in hatching on the screen. This area hasn't been approved or taken over by the county yet, but because it was dedicated, once the subdivision was recorded, now that the developer wants to reconfigure the lots with the balance of the roadway as shown on the plat here, the vacation is required. Staff recommends approval of the request, and I see that someone is on from Avon Marsh this evening.
Thank you. Any questions from council for Ms. Wiles? Thank you. Petitioner?
Uh, good evening. Robert Nichols with Avon Marsh Consultants, three fifteen West Jefferson, representing the petitioner, Fur Road Holdings. Abby did a good job of explaining, but we wish to vacate the small, call it an eyebrow, so we can take three lots and combine them into two for the new owners. Be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none. We will open the public hearing on Bill number ninety twenty-two. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion on ninety twenty-two?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number ninety twenty-two was made by Councilman Cantor Ricky. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
President Morton?
Yes.
Bill passes nine zero.
Let the record show that Bill number ninety twenty-two was passed by a vote of nine to zero, zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number one hundred twenty-two?
Bill number one hundred dash twenty-two, a resolution of the St. Joseph County Council declaring a portion of St. Joseph County an economic revitalization area pursuant to I E C six, one point one dash twelve point one dash one, at sequence, declaring, declaring resolution tax abatement. Petitioner, Max Plastics, Inc.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill number one hundred dash twenty-two comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, council members. Christian Brown, Economic Development Specialist, Department of Infrastructure, Planning, and Growth, offices on the seventh and eleventh floors of this building. For you is a declaratory resolution for a tax abatement for Max Plastics, Inc. They are located at thirteen zero seven seven McKinley Highway in unincorporated Mishawaka, which is in Council District I. Petitioner is a new startup company looking to grow in the plastics molding and manufacturing industry. They've recently purchased the old United Conveyor Building on McKinley Highway and are planning to invest approximately five million dollars into new equipment into the facility. This capital investment is expected to bring twenty-five jobs at an average wage of twenty-five dollars an hour. They have filed all the necessary forms and paid the application fees. We are evaluating their workbook right now, and staff asks for your approval in declaring this property at thirteen zero seven seven McKinley, an economic revitalization area for a period of ten years. Happy to answer any questions. Kim Stankowitz from Max Plastics is also on Zoom.
Any questions from council? Mr. Brown? Thank you. Petitioner? Petitioner?
Kim, you can go ahead.
Oh, sorry about that, guys. This is new to me. Thank you, guys, for your time. Just real quick, a little bit about Max Plastics. As Chris stated, startup this year, growing in the rotational molding industry. We've already invested several million into equipment and looking to invest two to three more million this year yet. We are, our plan is actually employ closer to thirty to forty people by the end of this year and grow it next year into seventy or eighty people. And just a little bit about our company. It's a family-owned. We are very strong belief that people come first, customers and employees, so we treat our employees as if they're family. Any questions for me?
Any questions from council for the petitioner? Thank you, sir. We will now open the public hearing on Bill number one hundred dash twenty-two. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill?
Dan Caruso, three zero five Compton Street, New Carlyle. Mine is more of a question. He gave the average wage was twenty-five dollars an hour, eighty employees. Is that three employees making a hundred and fifty dollars? Uh, 80 employees, is that three employees making $150 an hour and 77 employees making $5 an hour? And a, average wage is not reflective of um, living, living wage. Um, it, it kind of covers up where, again, a few people are going to make a lot and, but most of the people are going to be scrimping by. Uh, I think there needs to be more of a definition of not average wage, but what a majority of the people there will be taking home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, sure, this is Kim Stinkwitz. I can answer that. Our starting wage is $18 an hour and up for all associates.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Yep.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing now on close to public hearing on Bill 100-22, do I hear a motion on the bill?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number 100-22 was made by Councilman Canariki. It was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing that clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Canariki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
President Morton?
Yes.
Bill passes nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 100-22 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill on the agenda, Bill number 103-22?
Bill number 103-22, an ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council amending Title 15, Chapter 153 subdivisions of St. Joseph County Code to exempt parcel divisions initiated by public utilities from subdivision compliance, from subdivision compliance. Petitioner, St. Joseph County Area Plan Commission.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, Bill number 103-22 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Abby Wiles, APC Director. So this text amendment exempts public utilities from going through the subdivision, uh, compl, or the subdivision, from compliance with the St. Joe County subdivision uh, and allowing them to acquire portions of existing parcels without a formal subdivision. In our research, we found that Indiana case law are already exempts public utilities from local regulations and that many other communities uh, have in their ordinance where we, where they exempt public utilities from going through the subdivision. Uh, I know there was a question that came up, I believe, at hearing in regards to it creating additional lots that don't meet the standards. This will not do that. It will not uh, create lots that would otherwise not be billable under the zoning ordinance. It merely exempts public utilities from going through the subdivision process. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council, from Ms. Wiles? Hearing then, we'll open a public hearing on Bill 103-22. Does anyone wish to address the council in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing now on close to public hearing on 103-22. Do I hear, do I hear a motion on the bill?
For approval.
Do I hear a second? Motion to pass Bill number 103-22 was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Canariki. Any further council discussion on 103-22? Hearing that clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Canariki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
And President Morton?
Yes.
Bill passes nine zero.
Let the record show that Bill number 103-22 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. That concludes public hearing for this evening.
Mr. President, Council Steve Dalton, Financial Advisor for the county with offices in Maryville, Indiana. I'll remind you that you received an email a couple days ago from Deputy Auditor Murphy that listed two state reports, one report that shows projected circuit breakers for all units of government in 2023, and another report that shows projected property tax levies for all units of government in 2023. These are estimates provided by the state. The only requirement this evening is that I say what I've just said and that you acquiesce to those comments being put into the minutes so that all the units of government know that you have reviewed those reports. As long as you're comfortable with that, we can move along.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Mr. Dalton?
Thank you very much. Next is unfinished business. Next on the agenda is new business. Next is privilege of the floor, limited to three minutes, on items not on tonight's agenda. Yes.
Thank you for letting me come tonight. Um, my name is Julie Engler. I lived in, I live in Bradford Shores, and I have the nightmare of having cars end up in my backyard. Adams Road dead ends onto Ironwood, and so drunk drivers just come through Adams. They go over the ridge and into my backyard. This has happened three times. They have no insurance, so we pay for everything. This last one, my four grandchildren were at my house, and, you know, the police are there. This man had, did not have a seat buckle on. He, he went, oh, he was going 80 miles an hour. He landed 150 feet into my yard. We, the front of the car was just augured down in the earth. He was against the steering wheel, the horn was honking, all the kids woke up. It took them 45 minutes to get this unconscious person out of the car. And he was taken to Memorial Hospital. If he wouldn't have been so drunk, he would have died. Like I said, this is the, you know, I have pictures. This was, this was before we moved in. Nullwood and the county street departments knew that this was a bad intersection. This is a, a pickup truck in a tree. And the paramedic said it was hard to climb up that tree to get this man out of the pickup truck. Now, you know, everyone I talk to, I, you know, I, I say, you know, what about a, um, you know, a fender bumper, something? Just something to stop these cars from projecting into our yard. They're not just coming in casually, they are flying in. This is what it looks like. This is the fence. Nobody pays for this. They don't have insurance. Here's the paramedics. There were three, three, um, fire trucks at my house to get this man out of his car. And no one, no one has an answer for me. I've talked to, um, St. Joe County Road Services. I got a lecture from Chip about how a guard rail would hurt someone, and he does, you know, nobody wants to take responsibility. The Eckridge brothers, they're going to get back to me. The county engineer, Sky Meadows, I talked to him, um, he's going to get back to me too. But he's concerned because he doesn't want anyone to get hurt. People are, somebody's going to get hurt. Somebody's going to die in my backyard. And I'm afraid that, you know, this usually happens late at night, but it could happen in the, you know, in the afternoon. People drink and drive, let's face it. This last guy that was passed out had just dropped off three children. Three children could have been in my backyard hurt. I'm a nurse, my husband's a doctor. We couldn't get in the car. The doors were, you know, slammed shut. They had, they had to get the jaws of life to, um, get him out of there. Nobody can help me. I've said, what about water barrels up at the intersection? No, that just wouldn't look right. We've got it, we've got to do something here. Everybody's going to get back to me. I called the city council and finally Mr. Um, File called me back, thank you. But my own district, I mean, I wrote him an email, I called, nobody answers me. And we just sit here in car after car. The last two were two weeks apart, and then July 16th was the last one, July 18th, it was just a, a near miss. The car came inches from coming down. And, and nobody has an answer for me. Any suggestions from you people? I'm in the medical field. I don't know what I can do.
Mr. Morton?
I'm sorry?
Can I see the pictures?
Sure.
Can I see them this far away?
Mr. Morton?
Yes, Mr. Katanzerite?
Yeah, I'm noticing, uh, again, I'm, I'm zooming in remotely. I'm very familiar with the intersection that, that ends in the, what used to be the Dr. Eckr property on Ironwood, uh, late Dr. Eckr. Uh, I see Sky Meadows is on the call. I don't know if Sky could address this. She's mentioning Chip. I know Chip's been gone for a while. Maybe Sky would be of help to us in this situation. He's on the call. Did that come through?
Yes, we can hear you. Sky, can, can you hear, Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes, uh, Sky Meadows, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the 7th and 11th floor of this building. Um, I, I did talk to the speaker earlier this week, and
Yes.
we did do an accident study out there. Uh, there are, in the past, uh, four to five years, I think there's been six accidents that have reports, no fatalities. Um, I, I, I think the key word, uh, that was mentioned was intoxicated uh, drivers, and guard rail will not work at this instance. Guard rail is not made to be, uh, made for this type of thing. It's made to keep people on the road going parallel. It's not made to keep people in hitting in a T-type formation. And it, this isn't necessarily either what the barrels of water are for either. It's a situation where the subdivision and parcel came in after the road and they're in a situation at this T-intersection that, uh, it's just a bad situation. The warrant, it's nothing else out there. We've gone above and beyond the warrants required for this. We actually put LED flashing stop signs out there, uh, last year. And, uh, those have been out there. That's above and beyond what is warranted for this intersection. Um, it, it's, uh, one of those things where if people are paying attention and obeying the law, it, it doesn't seem to be as big of an issue. And there's nothing from a warrant standpoint that we're, uh, actually required to do. I did tell the, um, speaker that I would look and see what other counties have done at similar type intersections to see if there's any ideas that, that, um, we may not be looking at currently. Uh, and our highway engineer, Mike Meeks, is currently looking into that.
Okay. Yes, you did say that, and that was two weeks ago. Um, you know, people
And I, I apologize, but
Yeah, I know. Everybody's going to get back to me, but Well, I people we need to do something. And I've, everyone tells me that if I put up, you know, stakes or something and someone gets hurt, that I'm liable. I'm trying to protect my property. Now, something's got to give.
Sometimes, uh, on a highway, um, they put, uh, the ditch, you know, so that you can't transfer from one side of a highway to the other and kill somebody. I don't know what the
And there's enough room to put a ditch there, and I've mentioned that too. You know, so the cars instead of
I don't know what the legal situation is on that, but I mean,
Yeah.
the purpose of that on a regular highway is to keep you from doing what's going on.
Right, right. And they just, you know, they're going so fast that, and they hit that hill and, you know, they're just, they're in my yard.
What is currently there is there is a
A flashing stop.
small drainage swell and then a big berm. These people are going so fast through this intersection, going through the stop signs, hitting this big berm that's, I, I'd say the berm's about eight to 10 feet high,
Yes.
eight feet high, and, and then going into the yard. I, I, a ditch isn't going to, to deter that. We have an issue where people are intoxicated. And, and the path, the, the, uh, accidents that have occurred this year, we've gotten the reports, both of those were intoxicated drivers. And a, a ditch in this, uh, case would not have stopped those drivers from ending up in, in, uh, his speaker's back.
It probably wouldn't have stopped the third one because he was going 80 miles an hour. But the other two, it would have stopped him because the front wheels would go down before they hit that upswing.
But then we also have to look at, is, is a ditch something that's going to cause issues with other normal day drivers if they sort of go off the road also? Are we doing something that might impact the driver that isn't following the rules and, and, uh, isn't an everyday occurrence and causing more problems with people that might just sort of slightly go off the road? A ditch in this area isn't going to help with the issue.
Is that, is that your fire pit right there in the back?
I'm sorry?
Is that a fire pit right there?
No, that's where they tore up the landscape.
Oh, and one of the pictures, it looked like there was something back there.
No, we, you know, we have a, our yard, it's a nice yard, but which one are you looking at? One of these pictures?
I'm just looking from overhead, but one of the pictures
Okay, this, here. This one?
Yeah, what is that?
That, that was our yard, which is, it was all landscape, but it was, this is the first car that went through.
And that's in that, what, like northeast corner?
Yes, yes, this is the corner. This, there was a tree here and all kinds of landscaping and flowers and everything. He came down through it, and he, he drove around and was building up speed, trying to get back out the same way he came. So he hit sprinklers and tore up everything, and then he ran. So the police were there with canine dogs going through the area, trying to find the guy that was running. And, and nobody ever found him, and then he said his car was stolen, so he's not responsible. So every time, you know, I don't know what to say. I, I'm just frustrated and no one will help. They all, you know, they're worried about somebody is going to get hurt with a guard rail or a, a bucket of water. I don't know what to do. But they knew about this. They knew about it before they sold us the lot and we built a home. So, people are going to get back to me?
I give you a card. I, I don't have an answer for you tonight.
Okay.
But we'll work with Sky, we'll find out what, what can happen, and yes, we'll have an answer. It may not be the answer that you like, I don't know, but we'll, we'll come up with an answer.
It may not be the answer I like. You mean, you, you might not be able to keep cars out of my backyard?
I'm not an expert in traffic control.
No, no, I'm, I'm just saying, though, do you think as a reasonable person that there should be some way to prevent this?
From hearing your side of the story tonight, yes.
Okay.
So I think I'm going to look into this and try to see what we can do, but I can't tell you right now what the answer, what that solution's going to be.
All right. I just appreciate somebody saying they're going to get back to me and try and, and just not feel sorry for me and say there's not much we can do.
We don't want it to have to make you move. We're going to fix what we can, make as best we can.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
On the favor? Oh, wait a minute. Please take the roll.
Oh, yeah. I thought it was done.
Mark's fault.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Oh. He's not here.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms., Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Canariki?
No. Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
President Morton?
Yes.
The motion to adjourn passes seven to.
Thank you. Let the record show
Go next time, Joe.
Record show that the motion to adjourn was passed by seven to. The two that wish to stay, have at it.